Evening. It is January thirteenth, 2025. It is seven oh-two, and we'd like to begin the meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Spain?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Hackey?
Here.
Councilmember Gibson?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here. All right, let's time for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the December sixteenth council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Pretty nice.
Anyone abstain? Okay, City Managers' Report. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of items. One for public's benefit. At our last meeting, ordinance 2024-101 was read. The public hearing on that, that was regarding rezoning the area around Heritage Presbyterian Church, that will be held on February tenth. So the public hearing will be at our next regular meeting. Also want to make folks aware, new city initiative, what's called a Good Neighbor Trailer. The city has put together, and this came of the Public Services Committee, a trailer that has a lot of common yard tools, equipment, that would be appropriate for community cleanup or service projects. Currently, it's stocked with specific seasonal needs, such as snow shovels and salt. For those interested maybe in using that to help clean up a neighbor or assist neighbors or take on a project, can contact the City of Mason, specifically the Service Department, to reserve that. Reminder that Christmas tree collection will continue throughout the month of January. Residents that leave their tree curbside, with the cut-in towards the street, it will be chipped and composted. And just a reminder, the trees are placed in bags at the curb. Rumpke will pick those up to be taken to the landfill. For council's benefit, Saturday, January twenty-fifth, from ten a.m. to twelve p.m., Family Promise of Warren County. One of our service agreement partners is hosting an opportunity to tour their campus, enjoy refreshments, and understand a little bit more about their mission. If any council members are interested in attending, please let me or Jennifer know. And then I did want to take a moment. Past couple of weeks, I've had some extra time to kind of ponder and reflect as I shoveled snow. I'm just very proud of the job that the city does, the resources that council provides. I think we stand out in the region for how well we do snow removal, even when it is enormous amount of snow over an extended period of time. And I kind of conclude, there's a couple of things that help us stand out. One is, we have a really good system. And I think it's fairly unique how we use the Instant Command System. It becomes the priority across all city departments. So anyone, you know, working for the city tries to align whatever they're doing, whether they have a CDL or not, with making sure that snow removal is kept as the priority. Excuse me. Next, I think, communication. The way we use Instant Command and the coordination, the communication across departments to counsel on what the status is, where the need is. It works extremely well. I think everyone involved feels well informed, even though the variables of weather and snow accumulation change. Everyone knows the mission, knows the resources we have, and knows how to attack it. And then obviously, the resources that we have are a blessing. The trucks, the innovation on the trucks, the salt barn, the salt that everyone laughs a little bit in June-July when we're ordering salt, but it's that type of preparation with the capital resources. But the conclusion I reached as I was shoveling my driveway is that the most important part of that, and this wouldn't happen as well as it does, is we have an awful lot of really good people across multiple departments that take a lot of pride. And making sure that Mason stands out and that Mason residents deliver that service isn't just a matter of a paycheck to them. It's they really care about how well they do that particular job. And if it weren't for that, all those pieces work together, but if it weren't for that key piece, I don't think we'd benefit from snow removal as much as we had. So I know we had a couple of videos as we came in here on the snow removal. I just wanted to acknowledge both council's contribution, the system we use, but particularly a lot of those good people that work for the city that take care of that for us. The last item I have, Mayor, is Saturday, February eighth. The Mason Symphony Orchestra is hosting its first concert of 2025 as part of their partnership with the City of Mason. It's a Valentine's Day pop-style concert. It'll be held at Great Wolf Lodge, begin at seven-thirty p.m. Tickets are available at masonsymphonyorchestra.org. Pre-Mayor members of the community center should have received an email today, possibly tomorrow, giving them an opportunity to purchase discount tickets as part of that partnership. So hopefully, everyone gets a chance to take advantage of that. And that's all I had.
All right, thank you so much, Eric. All right, next I want to congratulate all of the boys' cross-country team, as well as the girls' high school tennis team on their incredible hard work, dedication, and spirit that led them to their well-deserved state championship victory. We are so proud of your accomplishments, and you all have represented our community with high standards, and we appreciate that. So I would like to introduce the high school girls' tennis coach, Coach Leighton Jones, if you'd like to come up and speak.
Thanks very much for recognizing our team. Coach Reed usually does this, but he saw the snow and went west. So he's in Las Vegas, I think, right now. We had an awesome year. We had a, we, obviously, we've won the last eight state championships, last seven state championships, and this is eight in a row. So, I mean, that's quite an accomplishment. It's not a record yet, believe it or not. Eight is the record. So we're gonna go for nine next year, and we hopefully will set the record. As far as our year, we were twenty-one and oh in matches. We won every tournament that we were in, and we split our squad in one of them, and we finished first and third in that tournament. So all fourteen of these girls were phenomenal all year that we played. As far as state championship, the team won, actually, they were pretty convincing in their win. We won both the semifinal and the final matches relatively easily, which is not easy to do, but these girls, again, are unbelievable. The easiest part for Coach Reed and I is just to put them on the court and just let them go, because they are that good. As far as individual performances, we also had the individual state championship champion, which we haven't had that in a while, but a couple of years. So Addison was our singles champion. And we also had the doubles champion. So we were, we pretty much ran the whole thing. We were singles champion, and it was Emma and Patricia won the doubles. So we won singles, doubles, and the team title. And the team title again for the eighth time in a row. So again, Coach Reed's done a phenomenal job over the last ten years, I think it is, or eleven years. He tried to retire last year, but it hasn't worked so far. But again, we thank you for the opportunity to come here. Do you guys want the team introduced?
Yes, that would be great.
We're gonna have Sonal come over and introduce the team.
Okay, Sonal, I'm gone.
Hi, sorry. My name is Sonal, and I'm one of the co-captains for the Mason varsity green team.
I'm Herschita, and I'm the other co-captain.
Um, yeah, so our team, we've, we've just had, we just had an amazing season, just like Coach Jones has said. One of my favorite things about this team is just how humble but hardworking we are. Being an eight-peat champion, it isn't really an easy thing to do, even though our team makes it look easy. We've always been so hardworking on the court every single day, and we've always just like been able to put aside any of like the school stress, work stress, home stress, and just went, like, was able to just go on the court and play, which is something that I really love about this team. And, yeah, do anything that.
No, I'm just really proud of the culture that we've created around the tennis team in general, just how much everybody supports each other. And I'm really grateful to have been experienced that throughout my high school career. Yeah.
Okay, so to introduce the girls, I'll start with the freshmen. So first, we have freshman Ionika Metall.
Next, we have freshman Aditi Srinivasan.
And then we have Bhavna Stinghadi.
Next, we have Vanmai.
For sophomores, we have Emma Wagner.
And Ayumi Kashua Kora.
And Chloe Zhang.
And Sanvi Reddy.
For the juniors, we have Adriana Moreno.
Addison Cassidy.
Pratusha Choudhary.
And Anna Gotik.
So yeah, that's our team. We're the only two seniors. But yeah, thank you so much for recognizing us tonight.
You know, I spoke with Lieutenant Governor John Huestead the other day, who raved about Mason and said, you know, the only thing is, my daughter can't seem to beat the Mason tennis team. So you've got even the Lieutenant Governor who recognizes how great you guys are. So thank you for everything you do and all of your hard work and dedication. We would like to get a group picture with you, so if you'd all like to come to the front and counsel. All right, I need a motion to, for Resolution 2025-1. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Resolution 2025-1, congratulating the Mason High School Girls' Tennis Team on their 2024 state championship title.
Okay, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Mayor, real quick, just, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but in the City of Mason, we kind of like tennis a little bit. We've got this little facility down along Seventy-One where we do a little tennis once a year. No, congratulations. This is awesome. I'm a racquetball player, so by default, I can't play tennis or it'd ruin my game, but I love tennis. I love watching it. I love hearing about it. And I love all the work you guys put into it. So congratulations on quite a successful series of years and events. Thank you.
Yeah, real quick, I look forward to breaking the record and getting nine, so. And we have a young team, so it sounds like we have a pretty darn good chance of doing that. I won't be here, but I will show up and congratulate you guys, because that is pretty darn cool. Congratulations.
Yes, Mayor. I just want to piggyback here on what Ashley said. After, you said you only have two seniors. That's pretty awesome, so I'm anticipating that you guys will be the champions again next year, since you have such a young team. So that's really, that is really, really great, and we're just really proud of you. Congratulations.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spain?
Yes.
Jennifer has some gifts for you ladies. All right, next up, we have the coach for the Mason High School Boys' Cross-Country Team, and that is Coach Rep. Would you like to come to the podium?[964.96][965.00](applause)
Well, first of all, I'd like to start off by thanking the, and congratulating the girls' tennis team, because you ladies set the standard for all other sports at Mason High School. The rest of us can only hope to ever be and dominate the way you have over the years. But we're doing our best with that. And for our boys' team this year, we were state champions for the third time in the last four years. So we've not quite run the streak that you ladies have, but we're working on that. This year was a very special year for me. First of all, because this is, I'm retiring as a coach and also as a teacher at the end of the semester. And so I think the boys really kind of conspired to send me out on top, which was very special. Coming into the season, we had had a real good run of three years in a row. We graduated a lot of guys. All these guys run track in the springtime as well. And really, they're, to be honest, their track times were not indicative of a team that could turn it around by the next fall and win a state championship. And even during the summer, some of our training, our summer training, although they were working hard, did not go all that well. And our first couple of meets did not go all that well. And I think that shows the resilience and the leadership that we had of our team, and especially our seniors, because something happened between September and a couple of meets that didn't go so well. And at the end of the season, in early November, when we dominated the state meet and won by sixty-nine points over our rival St. Xavier, which made it even more fun. So as a team of resilience, of a rough start, that really came out of the end and were basically untouchable in the state of Ohio by the end, by the time we got done. I will, in a minute, bring up our seniors to introduce the team. I'll introduce our coaches that we have with us tonight. If it looks like we have a whole lot of coaches, we actually have a pretty big team. This is just the final cut of the seven-plus alternate that actually get to run in the state championship. And I am particularly proud of those seven that actually ran, all seven of them were also named Academic All Ohio, which means they all had GPAs three-point-five unweighted or better and ran in the state championship. So they get it done in a classroom as well as on the cross-country course. Coaches that are with us tonight, former Mason runner, who was one of our star runners, Isaiah Kelly. Coach Kelly. Another former Mason runner, Lucas Sagraves, Coach Sagraves. Coach McKay in the back is also a Mason teacher. And Coach Tim Pitcher as well. And two other things I'd like to highlight. One is that unlike most sports, where the practice and competition is confined to a certain area, such as a tennis court or a basketball court, a gym, a field, that is where they train. We train in the City of Mason. Our training ground is the whole City of Mason, and sometimes we even run outside of the City of Mason. And so a real key to our success are the bike paths and the parks and the various amenities that use the council and the City of Mason provide for us. There's no way we could have had the championships that we've had and, or won this year if we didn't have the bike packs, the connector from, you know, these guys know it maybe too well, the connector from Mason Sports Park into the Little Miami Trail and the other places around. They know every crack in the sidewalk around here. And the parks, just phenomenal places for us to train. They know about every blade of grass in those parks as well. So thank you to the City of Mason, because that partnership with our own Mason Invitational, where we have several thousand runners in Corwin-Nixon Pine Hill Park, that is also a real key to our success. And also, the partnership as we've developed with our Turkey Trot, that's been very successful our last two years, has also been all hopeful to our program. So I thank you for that on behalf of our whole program. Let me introduce our two senior captains, Max Greco and Will Buckaloo. They'll come up and introduce the rest of the team to you.
Hi, so my name's Will Buckaloo, and this is Max Greco. We're both seniors at Mason for the cross-country team. And so I'll keep this short and brief, but as our coach has stated earlier, you know, the season did not start off too strong. We had struggled a while at the start of the season. But really, I mean, you know, he said that, you know, we had turned it around and stuff, but I mean, really, I think it just all goes back to our coach. And, you know, it's his last year here, and I just, I really couldn't thank him enough. I mean, he's really the reason that we were able to bring this back and turn it around and go out here and send him off the right way. And I feel like that was a big reason also, that we really wanted to send him off the right way. And, you know, it helped us to gather as a team and do that for him. And so I just want to introduce the rest of the state team over here. On the far end over there is sophomore Eli Amshoff. Next to him is sophomore Paris Yedav. And sitting next to him is junior Kayden Winship. Next to him is freshman Logan Mix. And then it's junior Luke Burkabyle. And last but not least, is senior Jason Zoo. Thank you.
I just want to say, you said they all have a three-point-five or above grade point average? I mean, that's excellence right there. You guys are doing a great job at what you're doing, and we're really proud of you. That's not an easy accomplishment, so good job. All right. We're gonna do, we'll do the resolution and vote, and then we'll get a picture with the boys as well. Resolution 2025-2, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Congratulating the Mason High School Boys' Cross-Country Team on their 2024 state championship title.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
First off, congratulations on what an amazing way to culminate what you've done over the years for the program and for the high, you're at the high school teaching. So thank you, thank you. Educators are beyond critical in our world, so thank you for what you've done for the school and for these guys. And congratulations to you guys. I spend a lot of time at a Deso Coffee up on Main Street, and every spring, I see this long trail of runners going by. And I'm just thankful that I'm sitting there drinking coffee and not in that line with you guys. But congratulations, this is amazing. I just, I can't say enough how proud we are of all the work you guys have done, so thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I just want to say congratulations again, too. And I'm very sorry to see that you're leaving, but I'm sure that's well-deserved retirement for you. And I know Coach Kelly and Coach McKay, and I know you guys have an excellent team, just knowing those two coaches. Congratulations again to all of you.
All right.
Say something real quick.
I was waiting for that.
Yeah, it's really, I'm amazed by cross-country, because I'm a sports guy, but I'm not a long-distance runner. I've done the Turkey Trot plenty of times down in Cincinnati. I've done it once in Mason. I'm just struggling to finish, right? And like, ten-minute miles is pretty happy. And I'm always astonished by the times. Is it three-point-one miles also the course?
Yes.
Yeah, so looking at that, that is extremely impressive. And doing it day in and day out, and to echo what Councilmember Hackey is, you know, just my office is in downtown Mason as well. And seeing you guys, I'm like, that looks like a sprint. Like, can you just slow down a little bit? But, you know, good. And testimony to you, that is, you know, it's just extremely rare. It's hard to hear that, you know, there's an eight-peat, but three out of the four years is just so darn impressive. And again, just thank you for your dedication and hard work, not only on the cross-country course, but educating, you know, young men and women at the highest. How long were you there?
Twenty years.
Twenty years. Thank you for that as well. Great job. And enjoy retirement.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spain?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
All right, if you guys can come up to the front, we're gonna get a picture.
I'll be nice this.
How can you shove her into it like you did me?
Well...
I put my feet down for breaks.
Like Fred Flintstone?
Oh, my gosh.
Dan, this is decaf, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Man, that is crazy. Eight years in a row as state champions, that's nuts.
All right, next we have the Warren County Parks District CEO, Matt Latem, who is going to give us a presentation tonight.
All right, well, thank you so much. What a tough act to follow, right?
They gave you kudos, though, because you were the one.
Yeah, that's true, right? You know, but not one, but two state champion teams. You guys must be so proud of this community. And so here I am. My goal is to coach a future state champion park district. We have a long way to go to get to that goal, but I've definitely taken a lot of inspiration from what we've seen tonight. So what a great opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I appreciate your time. I had the privilege of speaking with your park advisory board before the holiday break, and that was a lot of fun. And, you know, so thanks for the opportunity for me to introduce you to Warren County Park District tonight. You know, most of you are probably familiar with, with like Great Parks of Hamilton County or Five Rivers Metro Parks. Those are both park districts in their respective counties. And Warren County also has a park district. And a lot of times, I'll go around in the community, and many people don't necessarily know about us. And so I'm sort of on this charm offensive, trying to go out and let folks know about us and about how we might be able to partner together to, you know, to benefit each other and benefit the county as a whole. But we have 311 acres up there, including 110-acre lake, golf, fishing, boating, rentals, shelters, a softball complex. And this park was previously a private park for Armco employees that was sold off by the company in 2008. And several different partners banded together to help the park district acquire that property and preserve it for public use. And it's now become the crown jewel of our park system with over 400,000 visitors per year. We also, very close to the City of Mason, about one mile southeast, have land in Deerfield Park in Deerfield Township. That's about 95 acres. We have a pond, ball fields, mountain bike and hiking trails there, an amphitheater. And we also have an exciting project coming up there where we're going to be spending a million dollars of other people's money, which means grants that we've received from the H2 Ohio Program and the American Rescue Plan Act to do a stream and wetland restoration project in the location of our existing pond. That's going to be an exciting opportunity for nature play, for kids to get down and access the restored stream and interact with nature, and also to provide education around the important role that healthy streams play in our natural environment. Also, I mentioned before, we have a budding partnership with the City of Mason. As a park district, we recognize that we currently do not have any park properties within the boundaries of the city, but we want to make sure that we're serving all Warren County residents. So, we are in the process of cementing a partnership with the City of Mason where we will be offering nature education programming in City of Mason parks so that city residents can interact with us. We can provide services to them in the places where they live as opposed to making them come to one of our parks. We love both of those opportunities. So, thank you for that. We are governed by a three-member Board of Park Commissioners. Ben Yoder, Wendy Monroe and Chris Heiss are our current park commissioners and they are appointed by the county probate judge, Judge Joseph Kirby. The park district currently is funded, about half of the funding that the park district receives is passed on from the Warren County Commissioners. Basically, we get an allocation of a portion of the county's local government funds that they receive from the state. And then, the other half is a mixture of grants and donations and money that we generate ourselves through the concession services that we offer at Armco Park. The park district currently does not have a dedicated property tax levy. So, I won't spend a whole lot of time on park benefits because it's obvious to me that the City of Mason really understands the benefits of parks in their community. So, this is not something that is new to you. You guys are exemplary at this in terms of the way you manage your own park system and the network of trails that exists around the city. So, you recognize the benefits to health that accrue from parks, also the economic benefits and how important those are in terms of where people and companies decide that they want to locate. So, parks are key to our prosperity. The Warren County Park District right now is involved in a strategic planning effort. The goals of that are to understand the needs of the community and how we can respond as a park district to the needs of county residents and respond to trends in our industry. We are crafting mission, vision, goals and objectives. And most importantly, we're working on defining what is the unique value proposition that Warren County Park District brings and how we can complement and not compete with the great services that villages, cities and townships are already doing. Finding our unique role in how we fit in with that picture. So, that comes with focusing on the core strengths of park districts. Some logos across your screen, there are examples of park districts that you might be familiar with, who generally focus on natural resource conservation, outdoor recreation and nature education and whose unique strengths are large regional green space areas, passive recreation and creating regional connections. And also, our countywide reach gives us a unique ability to work across jurisdictional boundaries and foster partnerships. So, we did a little bit of benchmarking as part of our strategic plan and we looked, we compared ourselves against park districts serving similar-sized counties across Ohio. And the results are eye-opening. In terms of the amount of land that we are currently preserving across the county, we are currently last in terms of the amount of land that we're preserving relative to the population of the county. And also, in terms of the amount of funding that we have to support our activities to preserve that land and make it accessible for public use, you can see there that we are well below other comparable park districts. But, you know, we can't really make the case for more support without knowing what our goals are, what we want to be about, what we want to provide. And so, that involves going out to the community and trying to understand what they are looking for from us. And so, as part of that strategic planning effort, we have done a statistically valid survey. We've gone to a bunch of different groups. We've had eight stakeholder focus groups, meetings representing various interest groups such as trails and connectivity, conservation and the like. We've also had, we also have a steering committee of about 40 community leaders who are helping us, helping guide us through this strategic planning process. And we've made quite a bit of progress. We're sort of rounding third and heading for home in this strategic plan process. So, the Board of Park Commissioners has already adopted our new mission and vision statements that you see there on your screen. Our old mission statement was about a page long and I said that our new mission statement has to be memorizable by me. And so, we made it nice and short. We, our mission is to enhance our community's well-being by preserving quality natural spaces where all are invited to discover and experience the great outdoors. And our vision statement has to do with becoming a leader in conservation, education and recreation through building partnerships and working toward a connected network of green space and trails that enhances our community's quality of life. And sort of permeating those mission and vision statements are the things that people have told us as part of our surveys that are important to them. So, our strategic plan goals, we have several focused on conservation, recreation, education, connectivity, community and operations. So, we have a main goal associated with each of those and several objectives underneath of those. And I had meant to bring those with me tonight, but I will pass that packet on to the city manager to distribute to you all later so I don't have to go through all of that tonight. But I think you're going to like a lot of things that you see in there. There's a lot of focus on how we can partner together to begin to think regionally about parks, open space and trails and try to connect the various cities and villages and townships that are doing great work together so that we can, we can begin to think as a region as opposed to, you know, only thinking within a jurisdictional boundary. So, as we move forward with our strategic planning process, we have several open houses planned for around the county in March. We're going to be trying to hit every corner of the county with our draft strategic plan and inviting the public to come in and talk with us about it, refine it and get it into that final form. We'll meet with the steering committee one more time and then hopefully by the middle of this year, we will be adopting that strategic plan as the guiding light and north star of the Warren County Park District. And so, the question that I would invite you to ponder as we move forward is, how can we partner with you to achieve common goals? And with that, my contact information is up on the screen. I'm happy to entertain any questions and thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming and presenting to us. I've seen you present also at the Warren County Municipal League, so I'm glad that you're getting the word out and parks are very important to the community, as you know. So, we're really happy that you're out there promoting it.
Thank you.
I got a quick question.
Yes.
That one slide, hi, Matt, I'm Ashley, by the way. That slide where it was like seven acres per thousand population, does that, and how, is your goal, I read through those, to acquire more properties, to partner with villages, municipalities, to bring those into the district? Or does that take in consideration all the parks in the county as well? That seven number does still?
So, that is representative of just what is in the park districts of those particular counties. So, we are blessed with a state park. We, you know, we have many resources within the county that aren't necessarily managed by the park district. I think we're still, we're still at or below comparable counties, but it doesn't look quite as bad when you include all those other things. One of the things is it's really hard to quantify since we have so many different agencies managing park properties. We've had trouble getting a handle on exactly what's in Warren County, not only that, but what's also in those peer counties. That's been very difficult information to gather. However, to answer your direct question about are we looking to add to the park system, that answer is unequivocally yes. And the reason is because we see how rapidly Warren County is developing and how open space is going away. And we know that they're not making more land. And so, any opportunity that we can have to partner to preserve open space, especially focusing on environmentally sensitive areas or rapidly developing areas or anything like that, we are interested in those opportunities and we are, we have access to grant programs that can help us with those potential acquisitions.
I'll be with Ben Yoder this weekend and I'm going to pick his brain on that a little bit.
Sounds good.
Excellent. Thank you for the presentation. That was very insightful.
All right, thank you so much.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
It's somewhat similar to what Ashley asked, but I was wondering if there's any sort of guideline or if you have defined a goal for, like, a ratio of park land to people or a ratio of park land to total land? What are you striving for or what's the best practice?
There are some standards out there, like the National Park and Recreation Association puts some guidelines out there. Although, the definitions are kind of fuzzy because a lot of times when you're dealing with NRPA, they're thinking more about city parks and they're thinking about ball fields and basketball courts and rec centers and things like that. Whereas, we're more focused on those natural open spaces. So, it's hard to compare apples to apples. That's why we chose to compare ourselves to other park districts around the state of a similar size. I think that's probably the more accurate way to set that standard is, what are these other guys doing and can we get to at least the midpoint of where they are? Does that help answer your question?
So, it's more of a comparison to others rather than like there's an absolute number somewhere that you're working towards. Do those account for population? I know certain, obviously, we're a suburban to rural county.
Yes.
Going more and more suburban every day.
Right, exactly. A lot of the, so, we really just try to be as objective as possible. You'll notice that great parks in Five Rivers are not on that list of peers. And the reason for that is because we selected the counties in the state that are closest to us in population. And interestingly, a lot of those counties that you see on that list are very similarly situated to Warren County in terms of how they relate to their large center cities and how, you know, how they're suburban in nature and urbanizing. I think the one case that is most analogous to us is Delaware County, which is just north of Columbus. And they have a park district that's also relatively young but has grown a lot in recent years. We kind of see them as a potential model.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is recognition of visitors. Would either of you like to come to the podium and speak at all? No, okay. We have a light crowd in here now that everybody's left. All right, next on the agenda, resolution 2025-3, I need a motion to read by title only.
Still moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Requesting the county auditor to make tax advances during the year 2025 pursuant to section 321.34 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Eric?
Thanks, Mayor. This, the last two items were exciting, this is not. The next two items are really housekeeping that council addresses annually. The first item has to do with property taxes. They're actually collected by the county. They are able to hold on to those until they are distributed to the, to the city, to the jurisdictions where they belong. But state law does allow local governments to make a request that those payments be accelerated prior to the statutorily required settlement. That allows cash flow as well as interest earnings to return to the local taxpayers that generate that. What this resolution does is it authorizes the city to make that request for those tax payments to be received prior to settlement. It is obviously recommended for adoption.
Okay. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
Still moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hacky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-4. Hold on a second, we already did that one. Ordinance, okay, sorry. Ordinance 2025-1.
I thought it looked familiar.
I need a motion to read by title only.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Establishing the 2025 fee schedule for the City of Mason and declaring an emergency.
Eric?
This is another housekeeping item at our last council meeting. As typical, council took action on the cost of living adjustment, or COLA. That initially applies to wages for non-union employees in good standing. The second impact it has is it's applied to all city fees and charges for services. So, that action set that amount at 2.5%. What's before you now is the actual vehicle of that fee schedule where it's made those calculations with a 2.5%. That comes with a bit of a disclaimer, this wasn't intended to make kind of uneven or erratic fees. So, they are typically rounded to a dollar. If they don't amount to that, we may wait a couple of years until that percentage actually merits a, you know, a whole dollar amount to go up depending on the base fee. So, this institutes what council took action on the December 16th meeting and is recommended for adoption.
Okay. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
Still moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-4. Hold on a second, we already did that one. Ordinance, okay, sorry. Ordinance 2025-1.
I thought it looked familiar.
I need a motion to read by title only.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Establishing the 2025 fee schedule for the City of Mason and declaring an emergency.
Eric?
This is another housekeeping item at our last council meeting. As typical, council took action on the cost of living adjustment, or COLA. That initially applies to wages for non-union employees in good standing. The second impact it has is it's applied to all city fees and charges for services. So, that action set that amount at 2.5%. What's before you now is the actual vehicle of that fee schedule where it's made those calculations with a 2.5%. That comes with a bit of a disclaimer, this wasn't intended to make kind of uneven or erratic fees. So, they are typically rounded to a dollar. If they don't amount to that, we may wait a couple of years until that percentage actually merits a, you know, a whole dollar amount to go up depending on the base fee. So, this institutes what council took action on the December 16th meeting and is recommended
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-2. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Accepting the public improvements for Ainsley subdivision and releasing the performance bonds.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Ainsley subdivision is located off Mason Road. It's just west of the Sunset Ridge subdivision. It's one cul-de-sac, Ainsley Drive, and has 19 single-family lots. We have inspected the public improvements and recommend accepting those contingent on the submission of the standard one-year maintenance bond. And with that, ordinance 2025-2 is recommended for adoption. I'll answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Mayor, just a quick question for Kurt.
Yes.
So the developer, I know when we, when they build subdivisions, when they put the asphalt in for the road, they don't bring that all the way to the, to the regular curb surface.
Yep.
Are they the ones that put that final layer in, and then you, your departments go out and inspect it?
Yep, yep, they do. We have them wait on the final course of asphalt until a lot of the houses are constructed, typically is preferred. That way, any dumpsters or equipment that they have during the process of the construction isn't disturbing that final asphalt portion of the roadway. But the, I guess the bad part about that is you have a thinner roadway, so all those concrete trucks that are dropping concrete off, pouring foundations, things like that, are doing so on about an inch and a half less asphalt. So there is a balance between how long you want to wait to put that surface on, and how big the subdivision is. But typically, they'll wait till the end, they'll clean that asphalt off, put the surface down, and then that's usually one of the last things before acceptance happens.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. But they pay for that. They also pay for all the lighting, the cost of lighting in the subdivision, until it's accepted by the city as well.
Now, when it's in that influx period, does the city, are we still responsible for, like, snow removal and those kinds of things?
We typically do salt only on those streets, and then we don't plow them until the surface. And that's a few reasons. One, it's a good incentive for a developer to get it done, because it's their responsibility until we accept it. And number two is there may be manhole lids that are sticking up that our blades would catch on, and so we generally avoid those areas until it's accepted.
Gotcha.
Now, these past two storms, knowing that this was on the agenda, that did get plowed, so.
Agreed, thank you.
But everything is done, ready to go.
That's nice, we plowed it. I'm sure they appreciated it. All right, any other council discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-3. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Approval of the final plat for Ivy Lane subdivision.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the subdivision that's located east of Manor House and the Mosaic PUD, where Dorothy Lane is under construction, and south of Alberta, and it connects with White Blossom Subdivision through Cedar Village Drive. It's about 15 acres, and it's a planned development with 37 single-family lots. This plat dedicates the right-of-way and easements needed for the development. It went to planning commission at the January 7th meeting last week, and was recommended for approval with two minor contingencies. One is to provide a public access easement on open space B, and the second is to submit the required subdivision contract and performance bond. With that, ordinance 2025-3 is recommended for adoption.
All right, thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Spade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-4. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a service agreement in the amount of $8,000 with the Mason Historical Society.
Jennifer?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, generally at this time of year, we bring to you some of our service agreements that we, longstanding service agreements that we've had with nonprofit organizations. If you recall, under our program that we run, it's a two-for-one matching program. For every dollar the organization, for every $2 the organization raises, the city contributes $1 for a maximum of $8,000, and no more than 2/3 of the nonprofit's budget. As I indicated earlier, we have two longstanding partnerships. The first is with Mason Historical Society. That began in 19, their participation in the program began in 1993. And they provide not only the promotion and preservation of history and heritage of Mason for our residents, but they also provide memberships for, one-year memberships for premier members of the Mason Community Center as part of this partnership. If you recall, this past year, in 2024, the Mason Historical Society put on the documentary of the Black Wednesday event, 50-year anniversary of the Black Wednesday event, which was very popular for many of our residents, a great turnout for that. Our next service agreement is with the Warren County Humane Association. We have been entering into this partnership with them since 2002. The Warren County Humane Association provides services for lost animals for our residents, or neglected animals, or just helping pet owners find a new pet. On an annual basis, they service about 100 stray or lost animals within the City of Mason. With that, both ordinance 2025-4 and 2025-5 are recommended for adoption. I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
All right, thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion?
I've got a question.
Yes.
How, how long have we been giving the $8,000 to the Warren County Humane Association? And have we considered raising it? I know the cost of taking care of animals is increasing, just, I've got four of them in my house.
Yep, since 2002.
It's been eight, every year since then.
I think they've received the same amount since 2002. We can modify, we just need a motion to amend.
Mayor?
Yes.
Well, wouldn't that kind of be up to Humane, the Humane Association? Because it is a one-to-one match, so I don't know what they would, if we modified it, if they would want to do that. So I would think we would have to ask them first.
Is there a, isn't it a cap of $8,000?
Yes.
So they would have to know to ask if they could get more.
Yep, they're pretty familiar with the program, so they generally just ask for the max under the program guidelines.
Okay, any other council discussion? All right, roll call.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spade?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 2025-5. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a service agreement in the amount of $8,000 with the Warren County Humane Association.
All right, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion?
Mayor, I just want to add into what Councilmember Bennett was saying, I think probably too, our finance committee would have to take a look at that. I think that would be a good idea, because once we raise one, if we do that, then we're gonna have to start raising them all, to be fair. So I think probably we need that to go back to finance at some point, if we really want to consider doing that. Just comment.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-6. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Southeastern Equipment Company, Inc., for the purchase of one Alamo Mantis boom mower in the amount of $319,383.
Kurt?
Yes, Mayor, and in council, if I could, I'd like to discuss all five of the fleet ordinances now. As it says in the memo, fleet maintenance and preparedness is the backbone to our ability to deliver high level of service to the City of Mason. Currently, we have 17 vehicles in the city's fleet that are due for replacement at an estimated cost of $2.5 million. However, our strategy lately, the last several years now, has been to rely on a contingency amount and align that with the failure of the equipment. So with that, the first ordinance, 2025-6, is for an Alamo Mantis boom mower. This is the mower that you'll see driving along the side of the road with an articulating arm, and it's got a mower on the end of it. Our current one is from 1992, and the type of equipment has changed greatly over the past 30 years. Currently, it's a John Deere-type of tractor mower with an attachment on the side. This Mantis mower is more purpose-built, where it's, looks different, it's the picture that's in the packet, has greater functionality. And this is what we used to trim back, both do mowing on the sides of the road, where there's ditches, and it can also trim back the brush with the Ficon attachment that comes with it. We expect this to last 25 to 30 years, like the last one. And we did do a considerable amount of research, trying to look at which type of equipment we could use to replace this, 1992, and looked at other agencies and what they use, and what they've been happy with. So with that, we're recommending the Alamo Mantis boom mower for over $300,000. The next one is Freightliner M2 Dump Truck. That's just the chassis of a new dump and plow truck for $112,000. And the next ordinance is the Bed Snow Plow V-Box and the Ground Speed Control that go in it. And as we discussed briefly earlier, that's more expensive than the chassis itself to outfit the truck. So this is, coincidentally, on January 30th, we expect to take delivery of the truck that we ordered last year about this time. We had a similar fleet ordinance to order a dump truck and plow truck, and we should take delivery at the end of the month for that. So the old trucks become a backup, and those are also crucial. We have a couple of backups that are still kind of limping along, that we had to use for this last storm. We have different parts, like the power takeoff that runs, parts of the V-Box. If that goes out, we can have staff jump in a different truck and continue on their routes. So those are critical, even though they're seldom used, because our fleet is well taken care of. Next is ordinance nine. That is for the purchase of F-350 pickup truck, Ford Maverick truck, and two Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles. The F-350 is replacing a 2008 model that's used as the service center fleet. That's replacing one that has significant corrosion issues and is in failing condition. The Ford Maverick, it'd be a hybrid vehicle, so that does have battery and gas power. It's not a, doesn't need to be plugged in. But this would be the first type of a hybrid vehicle in our fleet, and would give us an opportunity to try that and evaluate that for future fleet replacements. That would replace a 2014 Tahoe that's used by our building inspection staff. And then the two police interceptor vehicles would replace existing police cruisers that are in service. And finally, ordinance 10 is another Grounds Master mower. These are mowers that are used, they're really frontline vehicles out at the golf course, and that one's just over $100,000. That would replace an existing mower that we're having difficulty getting replacement parts for, and is in very poor condition. That mower will come out of the golf fund, the others will come out of the general fund, and the 2025 budget had $800,000 contingency added to the current contingency balance of just over a million. With the purchase of all these ordinances, should they be approved, we would still have a balance of just over $1.1 million. And we do expect a few other ordinances at the February meeting, and then a couple of ordinances for a fire rescue unit and a ladder at later meetings in the year. And I think that's everything. That's, so ordinance 2025-6 through 10 are recommended for adoption. I'll answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Any council discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-7. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with FIDA Freightliner Cincinnati, Inc., for the purchase of one 2026 Freightliner M2 Dump Truck in the amount of $112,295.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-8.
Equipment for the purchase and installation of a truck bed, snowplow, salt V-box, and automated ground speed salt controller in the amount of $154,940.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
Moved. Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-9, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Kings Ford, Inc., for the purchase of one Ford F-350 pickup truck, one Ford Maverick truck, and two Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles in the amount of $186,182.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved. So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Spade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Ordinance 2025-10, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Jerry Pate Turf and Irrigation for the purchase of one Toro Groundmaster 4100D mower in the amount of $106,118.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spade?
Yes.
All right, I have, Resolution 2025-4 was sent out to us from the Ohio Municipal League, and I need to get it added to the agenda. Can I have a motion to add it to the agenda?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Do we need to roll count?
No.
Okay.
That passed, so it's now added to the agenda.
Okay. Resolution 2025-4, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
A resolution of the City of Mason of Warren County, Ohio, supporting the Ohio Municipal League's challenge of AT&amp;T's tariff application at the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Eric, do you want to explain this a little bit?
I can briefly explain it. It can quickly get technical. But in brief, in the right-of-way, so along roadways, the right-of-way that the taxpayers, the city controls, public utilities are permitted to place their utilities. So you see that in power lines, things underground. They're permitted to use that right-of-way for utilities. However, they are required, under current law, when a roadway needs improved, or perhaps a bike path placed in that roadway, they're required to move those utilities within the existing right-of-way. What has happened pretty rapidly, and the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio scheduled this Friday, to consider an application that would essentially reverse that. For this particular utility, and then presumably additional utilities after that, they're asking that they not have to pay that cost of the relocation, that the local taxpayers should need to pay that. So we did some quick just assumptions on some potential projects, and estimate that that could be 10 to 20, and if additional utilities such as gas are included, a percent of a typical project of costs that currently belong to the utilities and moving their stuff within the public right-of-way would now fall back on that project. That could have enormous impact on lots of communities throughout the state, especially communities such as Mason that are pretty active in keeping the roadway network improved. What's suggested here by the OML is to take legislation here to make sure that there's standing. Several communities throughout the state are taking this, trying to take it before Friday, perhaps after that, to make sure that the Public Utilities Commission, as well as other state officials, are sensitive to the impact it could have on local taxpayers, and hopefully have reservations about allowing this to erode the right-of-way control.
Eric, do we need to declare this an emergency? Because I know there's a deadline, I believe Friday?
Yes, there is an emergency included on it.
Okay. And then is someone going to call OML to let them know that we've done this?
After this is adopted, yes, it'll be sent on to OML and perhaps others.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Okay, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Okay, next, we are on to committee reports. I know last month was the holidays, so I'm not sure. I know, I know I didn't have any arts and culture committees. Councilmember Hackey?
Yes, Veterans Affairs, not a committee, what is it called? Commission?
Board.
Board, thank you. I've only been on it for three years. I'll figure it out eventually. The Veterans Affairs Board met last week, and that consists of myself, the Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Stricula, as well as a couple of community veterans. Still working on finalizing details for the 50th anniversary celebration of the Vietnam Veterans Return, well, actually, the end of hostilities for America in Vietnam, and giving the Vietnam veterans the welcome home that they did not receive at the end of the war. So efforts are ongoing to make sure that we do that in proper fashion. That was it.
That's great. Did any other committee meet? Yes.
I just have a brief update from the Park Board. We met last week, and Chrissy Avery let us know that she would like for us to review just a piece at a time, the park ordinances. Apparently, they haven't been looked at in maybe 30 years. So there's a lot of things that are different about how we use our parks now. There's motorized bikes and scooters and things that didn't exist, you know, when they were originally written. So the Park Board will be reviewing those. I'm assuming it'll take us a little while to get through them, since we're just going to do a few at a time. But ultimately, what will happen is if we do recommend changes, those will come to us on council to review and approve or not. So just wanted to let you all know.
Okay, great. Anyone else?
Can I get an update? Where it's been a year since we have been talking about the property maintenance code. Where are we with that? And I'd like to vote on it in the next month or two at the very latest. So, you know, maybe we need to have another work session. Mayor? I have, I have an update. At the last committee meeting in December, I mentioned that I wanted to take this back to the Rules Committee because it was pretty obvious that the draft that was presented at the work session is not going to pass. And I do want to move this forward. I want us to have a property maintenance code. So we have been, Eric's been working with us, well, since the storm, to try to get a Rules Committee meeting. We almost have it finalized, when that's going to happen, and as soon as it does, there'll be public notice. So we're going to go back to the Rules Committee.
Okay. And then maybe shortly after that, we'll have a work session.